Good evening, and I'd like to call this August 3rd, 2021 Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, and Commissioner Andrews will leave us in my implications.
Thank you, let's break. Yes, we pause, we thank you for your many blessings, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful county in which we live, the beautiful weather we experience today. Lord, we pray that you would touch each and every one of us that need what thoughtful with wisdom, Lord, make decisions, Lord. We pray, Lord, for each of our citizens that you would keep them safe and healthy, and that those who have been touched by the virus, Lord, recently, that you would heal them. We pray that you would take care of our foster slavers, and those, Lord, who take care of us, in the name of Jesus, we pray.
Ladies, join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes for our regular session on July 20th, minutes for our work session also on July 20th, and the minutes for a joint UDC meeting on July 15th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve all three.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is an appearance of a citizen named Glenda Benham. Is she here this evening?
Good evening, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Glenda Benham, and I reside at 195 Overlord Drive in Piedmont Lake, Pine Mountain. I am the chair of the recently formed Piedmont Lake Homeowners Association in Pine Mountain. We are a very proactive group that is working to identify a sustainable, reliable, near-term, high-speed internet solution for the current 180-plus homeowners and the future additional 30 homeowners in our community. Current internet services are being compromised, or they're unreliable, or offer data rates well below the FCC's definition of high-speed broadband. Many of us have download speeds well below 10 megabits per second. Current providers also cap data limits to unworkable levels, given the data consumed by streaming TV and other online applications these days, or don't serve us all households. Our committee recently prepared a request for proposal, and has solicited responses from several qualified bidders who are capable of providing high-speed internet to our community. With 10 miles of roads, we estimate the installation cost will be in the range of $700,000 to $1,000,000. I am here representing the Piedmont Lake community tonight to ask for your help in committing funds from the American Rescue Plan grant that the county has received to help us implement high-speed broadband internet in our neighborhood. Please do not think we are looking to the county for a handout to cover the full installation costs, we are not. We will be looking to our community to raise some of the necessary funds through special assessment, and also seeking other funding sources or funding arrangements. Furthermore, we seek more of a partnership with the county to help provide broadband to a larger number of its residents. A partnership between the county and Piedmont Lake could potentially serve as a model to help bring essential broadband to other underserved areas of Harris County moving forward. We are willing to work with the county team to share the work that we've done, and the insights and expertise of our team as we live through this process. Broadband is now as important an infrastructure component as water, power, and sewage. The past year and a half have highlighted how crucial broadband connectivity has become in our daily lives, as students of all ages relied on being able to log into their digital classrooms, workers without home connectivity were forced to travel to their job sites, risking their health and that of their families, retirees relied on connectivity to be able to video chat with their families, and sick people and those who couldn't risk going to a doctor's office needed broadband to access telehealth services. Our demographics in Piedmont Lake includes individuals from all these groups: professionals, retirees, school-aged children, teachers, college students, and those needing to access virtual medical care. We just completed a survey of our homeowners regarding their internet service. More than 70% stated that lack of high-speed service has been a burden to them and their families. More than 90% perceived that it has or will impact the value of their home. Paramount in the responses to the survey is their frustration and anger that this has not been resolved, that their livelihoods are at stake because they can't maintain connectivity, that their kids can't do schoolwork, that their families won't visit overnight because they need to work and be connected, that they've had to give up graduate studies because they can't get online, that they have poor or non-existent cell service, and they're concerned they might not be able to reach emergency services, and that our beautiful neighborhood is gaining a reputation for being antiquated and laid behind the times. Regardless of what the future brings in terms of COVID, online learning and the need to access homework assignments online is now the norm. Many people in the workforce spend at least some or all of their time working from home or operate home businesses. Telehealth is also here to stay, but in order to avail yourself of it, you have to know that your internet connection is reliable, and we must be able to allow everyone the vital support of being able to remain connected to loved ones in both normal and exceptional times. The bottom line is people will start to leave this area if they do not have access to broadband. Piedmont Lake homeowners help the county by contributing well above the average amount to the tax base, and we add no burden to the county for trash cleanup and road upkeep. We ask you to commit to helping us implement high-speed broadband internet in Piedmont Lake. It makes sense for our children, our students, our teachers, our seniors, our local economy, and the county. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request, so greatly appreciated.
Thank you for sharing that question. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Benham?
We do have one. Are you at liberty to share with us the internet fiber sector?
Yes, diverse powers, while lit communities, true north Wi-Fi, point broadband, way from public data services and...
Public service data.
Public service data, and those working there.
And the question I had too, with that being said, I know that the United States policy there in Piedmont is self-governance, you know, as far as the way to delivery for that internet service, what is that, I guess, as far as type of servicing, are you looking at the fiber, are you looking at fiber, are you looking for others? What is that kind of nomination?
So, there are two approaches right now that seem to be very popular. One is fiber, and the other one is what they call air fiber, which is a radio-based system that works at 60 gigahertz band. We have had preliminary discussions with somebody that, you know, wants to install air fiber, but with my background in engineering, it's an RF and electromagnetic and antenna person, I do have some concerns about, one, the impact on the community, that we would need to install many light poles in order to house the radiation, and secondly, 60 gigahertz is extremely vulnerable to heavy downpour, and I haven't seen the link analysis because we're still waiting for our proposals to come in, but some, you know, the chances are that it's going to go down, and that means that we'll be in the same situation that we're in now, where every time it rains, everybody's service goes down. We have current radio systems, you know, within the community, and they operate, you know, in the 2.4, 3.6, 5.8 gigahertz bands, but if you happen to be at the wrong side of the lake, or wrong end of the lake, there are too many trees, I mean, you get tree attenuation, you get tree scattering, and these systems are not terribly reliable, you know, it blows, it's raining, it cuts down. So, there is no really good solution in terms of radio propagation because of the terrain and, you know, the number of trees, and of course, we certainly don't want to take down a lot of beautiful trees, because it's going to be pimed out of there anymore. So, fiber seems to be the way to go, but until we see the technical proposals from the remaining bidders, then we'll go, what's the best group together, but fiber seems to be the most sustainable approach.
And as far as some of your home sales, with the people moving in, has that been one of your biggest, I guess, concerns with the people coming in, saying that there was a lack of, especially with the new environment that we're in, from what we're hoping for?
Yes, I think people are acutely aware of it now. When we bought our home nine months ago, we were so bad by the beauty of the area, we sort of asked about internet, and assumed it was available, and then we got a horrible shock when we found that it wasn't really available at all, and we tried on the radio-based systems, and for us, it lasted three days, and then it was gone, it never came back. So, we have people concerned, that we had somebody say that they lost their job, and I think the sale of my house is now going to fall through because the people realize we don't have broadband. Word gets out on the street with the realtors, and people, people know these things, you know, they know that there's no reliable broadband service there. And we have 30 new houses being built, so I'm sure that the developer of those homes will also, you know, want to maximize his ROI by telling people that they have access to broadband. This has been under discussion in this community for decades, and it doesn't seem to have been resolved, and it's time to fix it, because we need to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. And I will say that, as a, I live on Hope Church Road, so if we don't have our broadband, it's hard, I mean, I'll admit that. As commissioners, it's a concern of all of ours, and as a school teacher, it's really bad for me to have to be at home. We do have a meeting in Spots, where you're working to do broadband in the middle of 1.4, we're talking about doing it for the ARP money. So, as a commission, we are trying to put money into this solution, we're just trying to figure out how to do the solution so that we can do it legally, so it doesn't get anybody in trouble, and we can make sure we're doing it properly. So, just know that we are looking at it, we're just trying to figure out how to do it, and I can tell you that when I moved out there on Hope Church Road years ago, we couldn't even get direct TV or the satellite, so I've been there well over 20 years, I know how bad it is. Just trying to find the solution to make it better for not just Piedmont, but everybody out there, because it's terrible for everybody. And I thought when that new cell tower went up on Highway 18, it was going to help us, which is why I pushed for more coverage, and it didn't help any of us.
Yes, people in Piedmont sort of report anecdotally that their cell service, you know, the number of bars that they see on their cell services with like Verizon, dropped an entire bar, and I suspect it's because they did some frequency reallocation, because I know you can check, you know, what the frequencies are, and I've looked at them, and I suspect they, you know, upped the frequencies, and of course, the propagation is significantly worse, the power loss is higher, and, you know, we're back to square one, so we have, you know, everybody's, well, go get 4G LTE internet, you can't do it if you have no cell, it's different.
I try, but I just want you to know, we are looking into it, we're just trying to figure out a way to do it.
So, we, you know, anything that the county could do to help us, would help us to leverage funds from other sources, you know, we intend to go for the state funds as well, and, you know, it would help us enormously getting those if the county was able to provide any level of assistance, but I do understand your position as well. And Piedmont HOA is a nonprofit, so I believe that's illegitimate, so pass through. But we understand you have a number of people who need to help as well.
And another thing with broadband itself, and what a lot of people don't understand, broadband is, they're looking at the single network, and the way that delivery, that broadband solution is delivered, there's multiple cables, right? What is the best solution for, you know, the best bank for the block? And there's multiple solutions, there's wireless, there's, you know, there's hardline, there's, you know, there's fiber. So, to be able to figure out what best solution for a given area, you know, you know just what it is yourself, there's multiple caveats that we have to figure out and meet to be able to best, and fulfill that. So, that's one I think where we definitely have to look at the simplest one accounting, what is the best, I think, you guys, from the quality, from everyone else in the county, from the quality, and order of those, I think we're definitely making strides in that, and I think all the commissioners definitely have, you know, our citizens and all of our neighbors, definitely the best interest, and I really do appreciate you guys coming and talking.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution to accept roads in Cocoa Lake subdivision. All documents necessary for the acceptance of Sweetwater Drive in Section 5, Yomniwisch, and Red Fox Court in Section 9 in Cocoa Lake subdivision have been received, and a resolution of acceptance of these roads has been prepared for consideration. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the roads.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a financial statement from May of 2021. Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Benham? Is there a motion?
No.
Motion to accept a financial statement from May 2021. I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a request for tax refund. This request is for James E. Eldridge at 46 Lake Drive, Pine Mountain, and the amount of $45.33 since they had to warn tax. The reason was paid for trailer tag and air for trailer to boot on their own. The tax commissioner agrees, and the Board of Tax Assessors agree as well. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is ACCG safety discounts for property and liability and workers' compensation insurance. In order for the county to receive its annual discount from ACCG and its IRMA, property and liability, and GSIWCF, workers' compensation insurance premiums, the county is required to approve and submit two verification forms to ACCG, verification forms are the usual annual documentation. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the safety discount liability insurance worker compensation insurance forms.
I'll second that.
Trying to get it all, get you out.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening are appointments, reappointments to various boards, committees, and authorities. Does anyone have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that we reappoint everyone on the committees that you see where Nancy said they've already agreed to serve again, and then on family and children's services, I may have someone from that position, even though for the person that's resigned, but I'm not ready at this time to nominate that person, because I need to make sure that that person's willing to do that, because I just found out from Nancy exactly what all that entails, and I want to make sure that person's not.
I think that just leaves the planning commission, I think you were looking at this.
Yeah, I wasn't aware until I got this packet that Mr. Lender had resigned from the planning commission, so I'll bring up nominations.
Okay, so we have a motion to re-nominate for every position other than family and children's services and the planning commission. I will second that. Any other discussion on this? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution to extend the moratorium on planned unit development. The current moratorium to bar acceptance of rezoning applications for the planned unit developments, Bud expires September 7th of 2021. Another extension of the moratorium is needed due to the county undergrowing a major revision, rewrite of its zoning ordinance and other land ordinances until the UDC has been completed and adopted. A resolution has been prepared and extended the moratorium until midnight on December 7th of 2021, or until the completion and adoption of the revision and rewrite of the land use ordinances, whichever occurs first or earlier if lifted by action by the board. Is there a motion?
I made the motion to extend it to, it's in December 7th of 2021, or until completion and adoption and revision, rewrite of the land use ordinances, or whichever comes first.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is the agreement renewals of vehicle maintenance services. The city of Hamilton and the city of Shallow desire to renew their IGA with the county for maintenance service for their vehicles. There are no changes to applicable rates for service for either city. The number of vehicles owned by Hamilton increased by one, and the number of vehicles owned by Shallow remains unchanged. The agreements will expire June 30th of 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor? Motion carries. I'll try to figure out the dates in a minute, so do you have any...
New set.
All right. Moving on to our next item on our agenda this evening.
Number four, update the land use development codes. We shall file the application with community development on September 20th, first reading on October 20th at the planning commission level, second read and adoption on the November 2nd Board of Commissioners meeting, and the UDC will go under effect on November 16th if those times of day receive approvals. Number eight, replace the prison, we are preparing bid specs right now. And interesting, all the vehicles that are in the budget, F-150s, F-250s, F-350s, involve an order from Ford, they'll be here next June at best. So, there will be a lot of yellow in this part of the work for a lot. Let me see. Number 22, Phase 4 of the Meadowport Round Road Recreation Trail. Phase 4 is going well, it's on time, rehabilitating the bridge over Bear's 27 is going longer than expected. It's just a tough project, but they're working on it slowly but surely. Phase 5, the survey should begin any week now. Number 31, update the airport's five-year match plan, that's to be discussed at airport meetings for the August meeting and the September meeting, and the board should approve it to send to the Department of Transportation in October. Number 42, Phase 1 of the renovation of the courthouse. That design is being, should be completed by November, and the entire project should be completed by next June. Number 43, cattle projects should be used in federal ARP funds. Waiting for the board to approve, they officially approved the list of projects that was submitted. Number 44, number 48, relocate various county records to the Old Carver School through the integral agreement with the Board of Education. That should be on the Board of Education's next meeting, and if it's approved, it'll be on the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners to approve that integral agreement for storage of county records at the Old Carver School.
Ray, you have a question, is that Joseph's storage of records, or is that due to the elections?
It's both. It's both. It morphed into just records, and then the board elections has expressed interest in moving their operations to that facility, subject to various state rules. But it was at their request.
All right, thank you.
And then, number 50, working with the RVRC to assist with the T-SPLUS continuation referendum to be scheduled for March of next year. And that would be to continue the county's 1% sales tax in this region, that's why we're 8%, most counties were 6% or 7%. If that referendum passes, the sales tax will remain at 8. If it doesn't pass, it will be reduced to 7. But then the county's going to get its T-SPLUS funds of about a half a month. So, we're really anxious to get that on the ballot and to have the voters decide that. And I met with Jen Livingston last week, who's the director of the RVRC, just to make sure he knew where our party was, that we already discussed, so I had a good meeting with him last week, just so you know where we are with that. The RVRC, the regional commission has been a great supporter of the county, Greg Parker. You can tell the SPLUS and LOS collections, they were on par, they're not decreasing very much, they're on par. The LOS collections are on par. The T-SPLUS collections are on par, as where they should be, and then the single-family home building permits, last year, last fiscal year, the county issued 239 permits, the previous year was 236, and July was 24 permits. So, July was 24, so we're on to a roaring start at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, that's about it for the highlights of what we're working on currently, and we'd be happy to answer any questions of the board behalf.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir. I'll take a short break until our public hearing, and I'll just start at 7:00. We'll call and order our special use application public hearing this evening. As this process begins, I will read the application, then there will be a presentation made by the applicant, which will then be followed by comments of individuals in favor of the application, then will be followed by comments of individuals in opposition to the application, which will then be followed by summary, or any final comments by the applicant. After that point, we will close the public hearing, and we will take action. Any individuals in favor of or in opposition will be given a five-minute timeframe to speak. If you do not use all your five minutes, you cannot pass that time on to anyone else's. That five minutes is your time, and your time limit. This evening, our special use permit application is from Kirsten Luer of Horizon Wireless, and is for a special use permit for wireless tower. The location is 1,035 feet south of Georgia Highway 116, Hamilton, MAP 042, parcel 070, land lot 121, land district 20. The acres, this parcel is 231.9 acres, only a 100 by 100 compound. The use is permitted in all districts except R1, this property is owned A1, special use matrix 123, radio and TV transmitter and tower. And, Ms. Luer?
My name is Kirsten Luer, here on behalf of, oh, sorry, 1,000 Holcomb Woods Parkway, Suite 210, Roswell, 30076. I'm here on behalf of Horizon to request a 215-foot self-support style telecommunications tower. I did just want to clarify the introduction, the 100 by 100 is the total piece area, so our compound is only proposed to be 60 by 60. So, again, so this is a 215-foot tower, there's a 10-foot lightning rod, so 225 feet overall height for setback purposes, and this is off of a granite road. The primary objective of the site, the top illustration we have here is the stink coverage, this is what we anticipate with the 215-foot centerline antennas. A robust indication here is, think of red as pedestrian or pedestrian, yellow would be like in car, and green idea would be in building. So, primarily, the objective, the design objective of the site is to provide significant So primarily, the objective, the design objective of the site is to provide significant coverage improvements along Georgia Highway 116. Current coverage in this area, as you can see, is mostly limited to the vehicular indoors, marginal and sporadic. So this proposed tower would basically allow Verizon to improve the reliability of service to existing customers over an extended distance. Secondary objective of the site would be to provide capacity for the two of their existing towers to the east and to the south. Those towers have begun to slow with traffic and accessing the network is more difficult, so this tower will also help those areas as well. There are no existing structures or towers in the search ring to my life. The closest one is 3.73 miles west of this proposed site. Verizon is currently located on that tower, so the name is clearly there. Once the tower is constructed, only monthly maintenance visits, typically lasting up to 30 minutes, are anticipated, so traffic is not an issue, nor is there really a substantial impact on county services with no water, sewer. Utilities would be power and T1 lines. And this tower would also, of course, provide emergency 911 service to anyone within range regardless of your carrier. This application does need or exceed the county's code, and we feel we do have proven our need for this site. We respectfully request approval as submitted, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the board?
Alright, board. What is the distance from Grandt Road to the site?
So it is about 1,096 feet.
1,000, I missed the.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. That's the closest residential structure. I can tell you.
Approximately 5.
So I do believe it's about 1,300 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
You guys stated on your proposal, and I read this in your documentation, that you're looking at a 3.5 mile distance between our play from each individual cell site, correct? Is what you propose, what you're, I guess you're standardizing.
Well, there's really no standard. They all vary. So for example, this site is about 3.7 miles from the closest site, but then you can see 4.6, 5, and even 7 miles to the northeast.
Right. So this proposed area that you have here, I notice that you're actually trying to, you're trying to take some of that, you're trying to take some of that issue away from the Mountain Hill site and the customer areas, right?
That's right. The Hamilton, in that area. So that's 5 miles to the east and 4.6 miles out.
So with that being said, the placement there, why was the, what was the, I guess, the consideration for that placement there as far as looking at it from a county perspective, as opposed to engineering side? I know engineering side, you guys were trying to maximize where you're trying to get your efficiency from your towers at, but from a standpoint from the county, partner with the county, you know, looking at towards our citizens and, you know, our neighbors that need this, the more populous area would be more of a, more of a southeastern deployment closer to Lower Blue Springs Road that would still cover that radius, right? So is there, has there been any consideration built to move that to be able to maximize?
So I think they believe that this location does maximize, again, the primary objective being providing coverage to Georgia 116. That is the primary goal for them.
That would still be in that carriage area for this, you know, location towards the lower.
I don't know that, I don't know that, no. So again, capacity for these areas is different than from coverage.
Right.
And also, it just kind of helps, I think, relieve some of the traffic flow. So there's no additional area that's included.
So you're saying you're getting saturation these years in some of these areas?
That's right.
So with that saturation though, even placing that tower, that's just, what I'm trying to do is trying to figure out, you know, what's the good partnership there, you know, between, you know, Verizon, the county, trying to figure out, you know, what is best for citizens to be able to cover them, you know, that we need the broadband coverage there with that tower. And looking at the populace, did you guys happen to hold anything for a customer service rate is what would, you know, what would potentially be fed there? I know that we've got some of the, you know, local adjoining, you know, landlords there, but we don't, I don't see anything that really says, okay, you've got this number of concentration here from, you know, that's a million, you know, deployment area. So y'all have that.
So the engineers have, they have not provided the need with that. You know, we basically do all of the proposed checklist and point by point make sure we address each section in the code. So I would just say that they feel like this location optimizes their design objectives. You know, I'm sure they're certainly open to working with the county, of course. I imagine there's some proprietary issues involved in that, but I just know the favors to give a lot of customer complaints that has added to haunting with the need for this tower.
Right. Agreed. I was just trying to maximize where the service area and the proposed area, you're not really talking about that big of a distance away from what you guys proposed to be able to cover more of an populace in this location that really needs that service. And it would still cover the 116, which is your, I think your ultimate goal there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I only work off their modeling, so I haven't seen any modeling as any other location.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any individuals who've seen this in life, who could be? Yes. Please state your name, neighbor.
Anybody? Kim Calaway, 3505, Highway 116. To your point, I think it's an issue of geography, and I'm not an expert, but I know those hills pretty well. And we struggle in our home, my wife and I both work from home, not, something down on things that will happen. Our cell connection is spotty at best, and it's, I believe, got to do with the grid As a matter of convenience, and certainly for the Calaway Blue Clamp, we've got spotty cell connection. Wi-Fi is increasingly important for our machines now talk back to the factory on a regular basis, and so we'd like to have better service for that. I think I understand my neighbor's concerns about the tranquility that we have, and I share that concern. And it's kind of a technology meets the rural great life that we have here, and it's a tough, tough thing. And since the planning commission meeting, I've had time to give thought about how we've adapted to 185, to power lines, and none of those things have been great news when we first heard them, that they serve the public purpose that we, you know, put them behind it. And I appreciate the time that y'all give to the job, and just ask the job, whatever y'all decide is consistent with the public need and also the tranquility that we enjoy in Harris County.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak a favor of the statement? Yes, come on. Close that door.
To the commissioner.
Could you close up your name and address, please?
Living Williams, 4734, Georgia Highway 116 West. And I work from home, but sometimes I have to try to find a spot to get a signal. I am in favor of.
Thank you. Sorry, anyone else?
Julie Artenault, probably much as you know me here. 684 Big Sky Drive. We live in Big Sky, and we would, we are literally at y'all's mercy, is how I kind of feel about it. We don't have great internet in our area at all. We have HughesNet, and so we really rely on our, our Verizon signal for internet surfing anything, anything that we use. If we have a Zoom meeting, whatever, we don't rely on our internet, but we use the Verizon signal. And literally, we cannot do anything. I mean, for my grandkids to come to our house and do homework would be impossible. Mike will call, when he was teaching from home, and we would have Zoom meetings or whatever, we would have to go to the library and log on to their hotspot in order to get a good enough signal from about two and a half miles away from that. I don't work from home anymore. I had in the past, I worked for AFLAC, and I did financial reporting and that type of thing. The internet, even the internet that I had was so slow that I could not even do any kind of work really from home because it wasn't fast enough to download some of the applications that AFLAC used. So I would always drive in. So I retired before all, you know, before COVID and where everyone started working from home. So I can't even imagine what I would have done this last year and a half if I had been required to work from home. I know you'll hear people say that they feel like that this may diminish their property values, but that's what it has done to ours as well. I cannot tell you the number of people that want to move out to Harris County and move into our neighborhood, but can't because they don't want to take that chance and have to rely on the internet service that we have. I would love to be able to stream. I would be able to stream. My mom, she loves to stream shows, but I would love to just be able to talk on my phone in my home without going down on that porch or out in the backyard. See, even talk to my dad, because he gets good signal, he's, you know, in Ohio. So I just would appreciate anything that you can do. I feel like we're kind of at your mercy. I feel like it's kind of Harris County's responsibility to ensure that we have those basic utilities like electric and telephone and water. And we just don't have that here. So I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Are there any other individuals who want to speak a favor of the statement?
My name is Reba Lancey. I live at 270 Big Sky Drive.
Would you say her last name?
L-A-N-T-Z-Y.
Thank you.
My grandchildren had to go sit in the van. They were about 100 yards behind the, they had to go sit in the van up at the library in order to do their schoolwork during the COVID pandemic. My son-in-law tries to work from home, but he has to go up and sit in the parking lot at the library many days to do his work. Sometimes we get one bar or a little bit of signal, but it only happens when school is not in session. When Harris County High School was in session, we get no reception of any kind of at all, even scanning out in the yard. So we would appreciate your consideration and thinking that it would help us a lot. Thank you.
Any other individuals who want to speak a favor of the statement?
Hello. My name's Mike Frank. I live in 686 Big Sky Drive. This would be a huge advantage for us. I think concern for property values and having a recent real estate transaction and being ready, getting ready to sell a home, I definitely wouldn't want to be trying to sell a home that did not have parent access right now. It was important before COVID. Now that workers have shifted, you know, more remote, it's even more important. The federal government defines broadband access as an area that has 25, at least 25 megabit down and 5 megabit up. I've spent nearly $1,000 on signal repeater, signal booster equipment to be able to get a signal inside my home, to be able to have internet through Verizon. I have no access to any broadband carrier or broadband internet service in my address, none whatsoever. There are times where I might be able to get one megabit down, or one megabit upload. The vast majority of times, I meant less than one, and oftentimes I meant .05 megabit upload, which is almost diehard internet speeds. I work from home, work at AFLAC, control the security, and I am not able to, I can participate in meetings usually with my team because of download. I do have enough download speed to be able to receive feeds from them, but I can't share any content forward. I can't turn on my camera. I can do nothing because I don't have the fast enough connection to actually be able to upload video at all. And that's after spending nearly $1,000 on repeater equipment to boost the signal. Because the tower that my assistant connects to is over four miles south of our house. This tower that they would put, and is left, this tower, I've heard you mention, you know, how they consider relocating to Lower Blue Springs Road. Lower Blue Springs Road is about 600 feet elevation, at least all the pinpoints that I've looked at. This particular property, and I don't have the exact coordinates of where the tower would be located, but if you look at the topographical map of this property, there's two sections that are over 800 feet elevation. And with a line of sight survey from where the tower would be constructed, if it were at the full height, and the house, you know, the roof level of my house, I would barely be able to see, my antenna would barely be able to see the top of that antenna. If it were on Lower Blue Springs Road, I would have no, I would have no ability to see it because it would be too far, too long. So if this is, if this is erected, I would have a connection that is just under two miles from my house, I might be able to get a connection that we have allowed or going off for me to work. As it stands right now, I have, I have driving to Columbus at night, a backup running, or driving to another site to be able to get a connection. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals?
My name is Gillis Thompson. We live at 497 Big Sky Drive. I feel like one of the same things people have already said, I don't want to repeat anything, but, so our neighborhood has over 50 homes, and we have no cable, so most people have either the HughesNet or the Verizon hotspot. I also work from home. I'm retired, but I have a couple of other remote jobs that I do. And it's kind of embarrassing to be in the middle of a call and get knocked off five times while you're trying to talk on the call. It's, you know, it doesn't seem professional, and it's, you know, they're kind of used to it by now. They say, oh, that's Bill's internet. So when my grandkids come, you know, anybody that comes to my house, nobody else can use the, use it other than us. It's a minimum number of people, and we're kind of at a higher level in Big Sky. So we don't have to go outside and use our phone, but we usually can't see the picture on FaceTime. So when my grandkids call, we can't see them, or they can't see us most of the time. Or when they send us a picture, I'll say, I have to say, well, I might get that picture by tomorrow. And that's about how long it takes sometimes to download them. So for kids in our, in our neighborhood, I think it's a real disadvantage, and as a former educator, I feel like we have the responsibility to provide the kind of internet our students should use this in internet world now. And with the Verizon hotspot, we try to give out a little bit of can. You know, but even if you have to do it on your phone, to have some kind of access is essential for kids today in our society. So we appreciate you listening, we appreciate the consideration, and thanks.
Any other individuals in favor of the statement?
Paul Munger, 657 Oliver Road in Pine Mountain. M is in Michaelville and G I Del Del.
What street do you own?
Oliver Road 657. I don't know, I'm for broadband, commissioners, thank you for the time. I don't know where this tower, how it'll affect where we live. Up off of Wolfburg Road, down the Road from your development across two years, but I can tell you, we moved here about a year ago, and probably the only thing we didn't look at. look at was internet and broadband. Well, internet, that was just a given for us, but that's, but that's not here or there. I did put a boost tower up on the house. We also have a couple of Wi-Fi's from Verizon, but it goes so quickly, you don't get a lot of, had to increase it. None of the adults in the house, the four of us, use the internet or use the Wi-Fi. It's a two-man job for their school, whatever games or whatever they might want to play, but primarily school. So we don't even use it. So I have a measly 15 acre, so if this site has more, be more than welcome to come look in my hawthorn and put a tower up there because we enjoy it. I mean, I do the Apple TV, can't really do that anymore for what I watch. Just because it goes down and you don't have it, so I'm either watching on my phone or putting the laptop, then the laptop will cut out and be minutes behind. So that's not really very feasible. So I applaud your effort. I would say that even with this, I think you still need to continue to look at the county like, talk like you're doing, and kind of do use the federal monies and do stuff with things because it's a godsend down here and people need it. It's just part of life today, as I've already mentioned with all the children. With that, I thank you.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak in favor of the gentleman? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in association?
My name is Faber Childers, 1701 Grantham Road. I live in the home that could be across from the proposed Verizon Tower, which will be two tenths of a mile door to tower. Our driveways 43 feet apart. Verizon's business case for the Grantham Road Tower is one, to provide coverage for Highway 116. Secondly, to provide outside range to Highway 116 indoor marginal coverage. Thirdly, to provide relief on two existing towers, one to the east and one to the south of Highway 116. Think about that. Why waste a resource for Highway 116 when it could be used to support more populated areas of Harris County? Areas most specific to homes with school-aged children and aging and disabled residents needing access to health medicine. Marginal needs limited, so the residents in those outlined areas to Highway 116 are truly no better off. Grantham Road and surrounding residents have adequate service. How do the residents in the range of Grantham Road Tower benefit from the relief of two other stressed towers? What are the threats to Verizon in Harris County? EMCs, they are the number one evolving competitor. EMCs are offering fiber optic technology and pole attachments for rural high-speed internet access. Fiber optics are being planned for several areas in Harris County. Pole attachments are available now throughout rural Georgia for $1 per pole per year versus the old rate of $20. Satellites are ideal for rural and remote communities and activity challenges. Unbound by traditional ground infrastructure, satellites will deliver high-speed internet services to locations where access has been unreliable or completely unavailable. The proof is in the detail. Given to you is supporting documentation for the EMC and satellite advancements for rural high-speed internet services becoming available in Harris County. EMCs and satellites are the best resolve for Harris County residents. They eliminate ground infrastructure or cell towers throughout our elegant and scenic agricultural landscape. Pole attachment is available now through EMCs called the Georgia Solution. EMCs have another offering called Solving the Digital Divide through the full integration of fiber optics with internet service providers projected to support 80% of rural Georgia. Three areas of Harris County are currently being planned for development. Satellite provider Starlink will begin offering high-speed internet coverage in the U.S. and Canada from mid to late 2021. Publicly traded companies have an obligation to keep their shareholders happy. Verizon's proposal for the Grantham Road Tower, the four before this one and the other seven coming down the pipeline are just that. EMCs and satellite companies are dipping at the heels of Verizon. Their products and services are real weaknesses for Verizon and time is on Verizon's side to compete with them. In conclusion, we live here together in Harris County. Don't allow Harris County to work for Verizon. Make Verizon work for Harris County. Anyone can color a map red, yellow, and red. Demand a needs assessment study supported by demographics and psychographics, also known as a geosegmentation analysis. They can do it. They have market research analysts. They also have an investor relations department. They are responsible for keeping this type of information. I ask for the Board of Commissioners' support of our opposition to Verizon's wireless's application of special notice to build a tower across from our home at 1701 Grantham Road that will be two tenths of a mile from my front door to that tower. And a reminder, our driveways will be 43 feet apart. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you.
Good evening. David Childers, I live at 1701 Grantham Road. How many cell towers do we have in Harris County? How many are Verizon on? How many are Big or maxed out with providers? Do we know? Why not? This is the board that Verizon brought to the planning commission. Do you see the red search, search area right here? How was this derived? Market research for needs? I don't think so. I know three other people in the area that were contacted previously to put a tower outside of this range. I myself multiple times and I turned them down. Also on this photo, do you see any homes? My home is actually, whoops, my home is actually located right here. If you can see that, it's blocked out by their type and their text, so you don't see the home residence. Interesting enough. Also, I'll address these homes in a minute again. Now, who's going to benefit from this tower? See this photo on the back? This is also from Verizon. This is a top, this is existing and that's proposed. So I ask again, who is benefiting? Do we have a number of people and locations that will gain service? Why not? We should know what we are getting. Is Verizon really the only one benefiting, benefiting from this? All right, let me show you something. I'm no engineer. Did Verizon send one? Well, at the last meeting, John Brent said, next time, bring an engineer. I made a copy of the proposed coverage. That's the bottom one with the green. I laid it over a Google map to give location reference. Scale is not exact, but very close. Holding it up to a light, I was able to reference lakes, the road, and creek. Because if you look at this map, they don't even show a road. Do we even know who's getting coverage here? Then I was able to draw the roads and the creek on the proposed coverage map. Then I roughly circled that map on the Harris County tax map, which I got off the website. Then I looked at the parcels on the Harris County tax map and listed the acres. And if there was a home, that's an Excel spreadsheet, the parcels affected in the main circle total were about 18,000 acres, about 28 square miles, and had around 26 homes. That was the most densely green circle, which I circle on there. 26 homes. Now, I could be wrong a little bit, let's just say I'm wrong double. So 26 homes times 2.66 people per household, which comes from the census info off the Harris County website, equals 71 people in the main green area of anticipated coverage. That's 2.6 people per square mile. And Harris County in 2010 had 69 people per square mile. 2010, we know how it's grown. How many do we have now? I don't know. Look, this is just a real quick rough estimates. However, what data do we have to look at? What are we doing here? Do we have demographic or market study or needs assessments? Do we have a list of people in this area that need coverage, that have coverage? We have service here on Grantham Road and we don't want a tower. Look, it looks like a bunch of bait and switch from a big shell named Verizon to get what they want. Is what we need, is this, how could we know? Do we have any idea? They want us to trust that. I think Verizon thinks we are not even going to do our due diligence and see what this really is. Show us a bunch of green. Green is good, right? As far as we know. Tell us it's good. Tell us we need it and leave, not to come back until they want more and do this again. And when will that be? How many towers more will there be in wait? Have we looked into county land, state land? We could benefit from the lease revenue versus someone who doesn't even live in the county. Look, I asked a bunch of rhetorical questions so far. However, this one is the most important piece to answer right now tonight. If Verizon puts up a tower and wants to come back and add to it, to make it bigger, put lights on it, or something like make 5G, what's their stoplight? Do they come back here and have to get approved? What about the conditions? Are the conditions on it? I would like the answer to that one question when I'm done. We do have other options here. We've heard a lot of them tonight. I think the lady here at Piedmont had some great information there. There are these, there are so many other options that will scar rural elegance. Please hold them accountable to providing us with the tools and information to make good decisions. Please take your time gathering facts and researching, making good decisions. That's five minutes. I'll give you this right here. This is what was proposed to us. One thing I would say is, I would say that I don't even think that their subdivision is even in the green, just so you know.
Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in association?
Mr. Childers, how far is your house off?
Oh, yeah, that was the thing I was going to tell. She said 1300 feet.
How far is your house off, right in front?
I don't know. I can tell you, I'd say 500 feet, but also the tower, just so you know that she said 1300 feet. If you look on the packet that you received, it's 482 feet, okay? From where the tower location is, I can give you all the information though off the top of my head. I didn't have time, sorry. I got a little distracted, a little too much, sorry.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak in association?
My name is David Farmer. This creek that comes from that land, all spring flood and regulates, just like 200 miles of mountain, and it's, I'm pretty dumb. Anyway.
Excuse me, Mr. Farmer. We're not, I'm going to shoot the water to the mark.
Okay.
Sorry, David.
How's that?
That's better. Thank you.
Anyway, this spring flood creek comes on our property, some other regulates, a mile or something that this little tractor truck is talking about. This little footprint they're talking about. Anything they do there is called a spike, called that little creek. And I'm sure that nobody, I don't want anything in my creek. I don't think any young ones like that here, spring flood creek in the place. And I don't have any, but it is, look at that, study your albums or that kind of thing. When I can stand and watch it, when something starts to progress, but usually you're behind the curve when that happens. And especially when I, well, rest myself, I may, I may, I may, but I'm a poet in general. I wanted to bring that up, that degree, I don't know, this story. Thanks.
Any individuals who'd like to speak in association?
Good evening. My name is Justin Knox. I live on Lower Blue Springs Road. I form situated between Lower Blue and Grantham Road. I represent not exclusively the Harris County nearby residents on Lower Blue and Grantham Road, but in a broader sense, many other Harris County residents. As I see it, the primary issues are the following. The issue of fairness, impartiality, and equitable even-handedness. Should residents of one area be benefited at the expense of or detriment of other county residents who have on-term investments in Harris County? Harris County has a comprehensive plan for development. Why is future and potential cell tower locations not incorporated in our county's comprehensive plan? Currently, our comprehensive plan does not include potential locations or locations under consideration or even apply to a current or potential resident that a tower may be forthcoming. Companies who intend to purchase property for their cell towers have all the available options of commercial land to acquire and develop. Residential buyers have only the property that is currently available at the time they're looking and based on what they can afford to acquire. The property that I purchased for my family was a limited option I had. Harris County has a comprehensive plan for development and a person like myself relies upon this development plan for the acquisition of residential properties under A1 agriculture. Based upon the maps available, nothing in the development plan indicated cell phone towers would be erected. Relying on the absence of this important information, they may very well proceed with the purchase only to possibly face a tower installation that will impact them negatively. An individual might not have purchased the property had they been properly informed or at least would have purchased improvised why not. It is important that citizens be able to make informed decisions. The issue of the unending and persistent problem is throughout the year we have hearings on cell towers, the same fears and failures persist with each hearing. How can we as a county get off this merry-go-round? It is my belief that for the fair treatment of the residents of our community, that this decision to proceed with cell towers should be tabled until a time, till such a time that a master plan for development, which indicates where cell towers will be placed, is brought forth so that citizens can make an informed decision on where to buy personal property without the possibility of any light or visual pollution nearby. The owners, the responsibility to project such installation should be on the service provider. Verizon, for example, has an army of engineers, but these people are never available to answer legitimate questions. They should be available at the hearings. They should answer all pertinent questions as they accurately project their plans going forward. If not, our county becomes the victim of poorly managed growth and consequently harms and end our citizens. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak in composition?
My name is Keith Kellifer and I live at 4430 Lower Blue Springs. And my east line is Grantham Road, so I'm on the corner a lot if you come down Lower Blue and toward Moreberry Grove. And these folks are my neighbors. Folks at Big Sky are my neighbors. I had an opportunity to live in Big Sky one time. And I sympathize with the issues that you folks have to deal with because everybody has a need and some needs are different than others. I've been there right at five years and the reason I came was for the serenity, the beauty, integrity, the wildlife, the reputation of Harris County. Born and raised in Columbus, Georgia, I've seen the growth. I've seen the exodus from Columbus into Harris County. And we all come for different reasons. I came understanding that there was no broadband, there was, the cell service was maybe lagging in places. I have friends that don't have very good service in Harris County, struggle with that. I've got pretty decent service. I still, I'm not a big communications guy. I carry Dino, the dinosaur, my foot phone, so I'm not big on smartphones. I'm retired. My wife needs a smartphone. She has the smartphone. So I like to get in the dirt. I like to talk to the deer, feed the chickens and things like that. And I enjoy fishing with my neighbors and doing, and helping one another as far as that goes. So I live a simple life. I was in corporate world for 33 years and I ran from it when I had an opportunity. And so I understand when Sonny Perdue was in office, he signed the rural broadband law. And Ms. Childers talked about. and Ms. Childers talked about that tonight, and I won't rehash all that. But I talk to the folks in diverse, broadband is on the way. State Service Commission last fall passed it, where they would have that one dollar fee per pole. And so it can't get here soon enough, I think, for all of us. But I look at the integrity of that, and I've got a power line going up my property across my lake, going to my neighbor's house, so he wouldn't have, have power. And that's fine, just don't cut my dogwoods and my sinnerwood trees, because I'm a beekeeper. And they did that, and I didn't like it too much. But what can you do? You can't replace the trees. But they made it right for me. And so that's what we have to do, it's kind of like having a meeting of the minds of one another, give and take, and see what we can do to work through the problems. I understand the children and the school and the grandchildren, I have grandchildren, and, but I'm willing to wait for the broadband to come in because they're working on it, as opposed to putting a structure up that's going to, to me, affect the integrity of the area. And that's just a personal thing with me. I support my neighbors on both sides, not that I'm for, I am against, but I understand their plight, but I understood it when I bought my property as well. So I just wanted to let y'all know that tonight. Thank you so much.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak in opposition this evening? Yeah, I guess so.
My name's Bruce Meredith. I live here, I live in the range, but I have seventy-five acres at five oh seven two, probably one sixteen. And I don't speak in favor or against, but I'll give you a little history. And that is about three years ago, a company out of Atlanta called TowerCon came to me, and we negotiated for a tower on my land, which is about three miles east of the current location. Their project was named Grantham Road. They had done a survey, and I fell within their circle of interest. And so we negotiated, I went into some help with some attorneys, and negotiated with them back and forth for about a year. They would not give me anything that would be favorably at the minimum, but we did have a cutoff that pretty well after my day, life, lifespan. We finally negotiated, I got it far away from anybody I thought was going to be impacted. The whole time I was thinking negatively and positively about these towers. I've traveled all over the country and a lot of the world, I know there are cell phone towers out there. So we negotiated and locked it down. And they had a one- or two-year option, as I recall, a thousand dollars a year on the option, and a thousand dollars didn't come in one year. I said, gee, where's my thousand dollars? And I called them in Atlanta, and actually one of the owners was a relative to the Bull Cow from Manchester. And they said no, they dropped the option. And so it died. The whole time that I had that option, I kept thinking the pluses and minuses of, this is a really serene area, there'll be more traffic coming out here, but now I see the chicken trucks abusing that highway one sixteen more than I've ever seen. And, but I got a lot of input from guys who were either speaking voodoo or whatever, but they were starting to pop back the safety and the emissions and the transmission from these towers. And they haven't had anybody speak or make a remark about any possibilities of everything from, you know, my cow won't give milk to actually really an impact for someone's health on the transmission of these towers, and I don't know if that's been addressed, but maybe it has, and maybe it's been addressed at many other locations. But anyway, when I saw this come up, and I said, well, one of the simple things that happened, either they've gone out, joined a period of auction with me, and found somebody for a hell of a lot better price than them, or whatever, maybe it's just a coincidence. But again, I'm not for to invest it, I can see where it would probably benefit my property to have that. On the other hand, I sympathize with those who are against it. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak in opposition this evening? Ms. Lurie, if you'd like to make any closing comments?
Thank you. I did just want to clarify a couple distances. This tower is one thousand thirty-five feet south of Georgia one sixteen and one thousand ninety-six feet east of the Children's House. Say that last. One thousand ninety-six feet east of residents. I just wanted to say that there are no existing towers within the search range, I know a lot of people had other ideas. Our objective is to meet the demands that we see today. So that's what this tower does. It does meet the code requirements. If there were additional requirements in the code, obviously, we would provide that And Verizon has an obligation to provide coverage to everyone in order to maintain their license, not just commercial areas, but everywhere. And obviously, I think rural areas have been neglected, and I think they're trying to improve upon that, and this is part of that. They're trying to provide seamless and uninterrupted, reliable coverage, regular spot, obviously, but connectivity to existing sites through, obviously, interstate, state roads, local communities. So, but again, the primary objective is to provide coverage to that Georgia one sixteen area. And I just want to thank you for your time and consideration. Do you have a question?
Can I ask a question? The recommendation from the planning commission had a couple restrictions, one was no lighting, and I see that that reduced the height of the tower from two forty to two fifteen.
So that was a typo in the, in the Great Frequency Engineers letter, so I apologize for that. I did correct it at the planning commission, so we did apply for a two fifteen...
Two fifteen rather than two forty.
That's right.
Okay. Can that tower be unleaked at two fifteen?
So obviously, we don't determine lighting.
Okay.
Like, you know, that's mandated by the FCC based on location and height. So in order to remove lighting, the tower would need to be lowered.
Okay, all right.
And what would it need to be lowered to? Is it less than two hundred feet?
That's right. So it would be one ninety-nine overall.
Including that lighting rod?
That's right, yeah. The overall would be the one ninety-nine, that's right.
And I know you're not an engineer.
That's right.
Would that affect its efficiency?
So it certainly would. In other words, all the evidence that we submitted was based on that height. So looking at some calculations, in order to get that lighting removed, basically, that would be a one ninety-two foot tower, I'm sorry, a one ninety-two foot center line for the antennas, one ninety-seven tower, and then I'm trying to get a two-foot lighting rod approved, that would bring us to the one ninety-nine overall. So essentially, an eighteen-foot shaving would remove the lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, let me just say one other thing. Of our planning commission, the recommendation, one of those was approval without, without lights on the tower, the power to the tower, just to go underground, and the tower is limited to the one hundred, hundred percent of the property. The other recommendation that we received is our staff recommendation, and that recommendation was also approval. Are there any comments or questions?
I think that the approval, the restrictions that are in the planning commission's recommendations, I don't think that if we were going to go with them, that we need to vote on this tonight because she just said she doesn't have documentation on coverage or whatever she would need to go to that lower hood, she doesn't have the data on that. So I think we would be premature to vote on it without having that information, with the planning commission making those recommendations. I have, I think everybody deserves internet access. I just, I just aggravated that we are not moving more quickly than we have been on this, and we've had talks with the first power, you know, I don't know how quickly that's going to come. But I also rode down Grantham Road, and I was just like, oh, this is so beautiful and so tranquil, and do we really want to do this? And yet, there are towers very close to my house, and I still have a tranquil, uh, child there. The lights that are on the towers are very close to me, they're not distracting to me. I don't see a lot of traffic going to those towers. But I do think that some information's been brought to us tonight by those who have spoken that I'd like to have time to look at and carefully before I vote, so that's just my thought at the moment.
So are you suggesting we, well, we can't do it yet?
I'd like to table it until Verizon can get us data on a reduced height and no lights. And also, I heard Mr. Childers say, I don't even see if Big Sky is in that circle. I don't know that either. You know, we have Big Sky here saying, put that tower up so that we have service, but I'm not sure Big Sky's in that circle. I also have the same concern. I just wish Verizon would do a better job on their charts because the, just as we said before, the yellow is, by their own definition, typical service or whatever their definitions are.
So like the car traveling?
Yeah. But these people are traveling in cars, they're living in houses. So what is the coverage if they're living in a house? I just, you know, I just don't think y'all do a very good job of defining that for us.
What, what tells you all to be working this role there?
Looking at, first of all, broadband, broadband in itself, I'm a huge reporter. I mean, my background is, from an engineering standpoint, I've designed RF fiber, I've designed PON, I've designed every cabinet of broadband you can think of. So from one standpoint, I'm looking at it from an engineering standpoint, which is Verizon coming and saying, hey, we need this as an optimal placement for us as a company, which one hundred percent, that's the way it should be. Sitting here in this, in this chair, the way that I represent all of my constituents, Harris County as a whole, all of our residents, and our children, and, you know, the work from home environment that we're forced in, but it's not something that's allowed to be put in, we're forced to do. So my, me opening this chair with my engineering perspective, what I'm looking at is, I'm not, I'm not proposing, not against the tower itself as a broadband, but optimizing that coverage as service, service delivery area for the residents, and still being able to attain the goal of one sixteen, I definitely see, there's multiple options there. I want to see broadband, but I want to see the right broadband brought to the county. The county itself, you know, our citizens deserve that, and that's what we have to look out for first, is Harris County and our citizens. So to me, I would definitely like to see some more, I'd like to see some more head and behind it. I see this as a, this is a five thousand foot, I mean, for me, I build, I engineer designs, I, you know, deliver those scope of works and those methods and procedures all the time. If I sent this to my hirups, they'd look at me and go, okay, what exactly does this mean? You know, this is giving me a generalized area, a generalized service delivery. I would like to see more, I would definitely like to see, you know, I would like Verizon to come down and say, okay, here's our proposed site, this is what, you know, how many residents that we see hitting the residential area. So that's what we were looking out for, right? I would definitely like to see more information, and I think that you guys should have some more to deliver to us as well.
So would it be possible for you to, for Verizon to provide an engineer, just for the table to another meeting? In the past, we've had many technical questions that unfortunately, there's not been an engineer here to answer. It's been very difficult to get answers from Verizon. Are there any other questions, Ms. Lurie?
I just want to make a couple of comments, and this is just my opinion, I know it's pretty hard to respond at all, but I think that it's come to the point to, in this county, either has to decide whether you want internet or you want cell towers. And I think here it costs purposes here. I just received an invitation today to an internet summit. And those providers are apparently being invited to this internet summit. Now, if we've decided that we don't want the support of the cell towers, why are we going to spend five hours sitting and listening to those providers if that is a part of their support system? So I think that it's, that it's time that Harris County decides. You don't want cell towers where people are living. You don't want cell towers where people don't live. So where do you want cell towers? Or do you want cell towers? And I'm not saying that I have an opinion of anyone. I'm just saying that sometimes there comes a time when the rubber meets the rug, and you've got to make a decision on what you want. That's just my opinion, I don't respect any response in all of that, but I'm going to just say that.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Lurie?
I have a question. But I will say that I have tabled cell towers before because I did not feel that the coverage or what Verizon provided us was enough for us to make a decision. And they brought an engineer at that time, and that was a cell tower on Highway eighteen. We ended up passing that cell tower on Highway eighteen, and a lot of people that were upset at me for tabling it to get more information, it's still not helping them, me being one of them. So I kind of agree with Commissioner Irons, if we do table this to get an engineer here more, I think we need to have the study of who is actually going to help, what people is going to help, where it's going to go. But if it's not going to help anybody, then we're doing a disservice of improvement by not helping anybody. The one on Highway eighteen, a friend of mine lives a mile and a half from it on Highway eighteen, and it doesn't help him. We approved it, we didn't have a reason not to. I'm not saying yea or nay, I'm just saying, but if we table it, we need to make sure the person that comes can answer all the questions and bring a study that tells us exactly the heights, tells us who's going to help the people all the way around. And we all know that everybody in this county needs it, but if we're just approving it to approve it and it's not helping anybody, then we're not doing a good service to our citizens. We need to make sure if we approve it, it's going to help the people that need the help. That's kind of where I'm at with that. That's just my statement.
I agree with you. We're not just approving towers to approve towers. But one on two oh eight, my constituents ask me, I have emails, when is the tower going to be operable? Well, I don't work for Verizon, I don't know. We approved it, it's there, and they're anxious for it, but we don't know when it's going to be operable, and they're waiting for it. So that's another thing that I'd like to know is, if we were to approve this tower, number one, how many people is it going to serve? Current residents is it going to serve? And then, will it be operable? Because we've been, I don't know how long, Brian, you might have come on that one.
About a year and a half.
A year and a half, and it's not even in use yet. So those are the kinds of questions that we need. And I want people to have internet access. I told my husband today, let's look on our place, see if we have a high spot. You know, I don't think the tower would bother me, and I, we don't harm, I don't mind that. But, of course, I have it right in the backyard, I have a power line in my backyard, approved in nineteen thirty-three by my husband's grandfather, so that the people that live way back in the woods can get electricity. Same thing today, we're asking people to put up with towers so that their neighbors can have this utility. So I'm for internet, I'm for broadband, I'm for towers. When we have enough information that says, yes, this is going to be good for this many people, and this particular coverage with a map with actual roads and, and so on, so that's what I need. So that's what I, I need, like, to hear.
Any other questions?
No. It's time we're closed in the public hearing. Um, thank you, actually. Does anyone have a question?
You can have that first question, or this one?
Oh, oh, yes. I make the motions table.
Is there a second?
To table.
Next meeting, first meeting in...
Until Verizon returns with the data that we requested.
How long do you think it will take to, uh?
Thirty days? Sixty days?
If I can have sixty, and if I get it in thirty, is that a possibility?
Well, we got a business schedule.
So, uh, you could do the next meeting would be, if you did September the 21st, that's almost sixty days. Well, I, I say that, but I teach social studies, so my math could be... But, uh, you know, but September the 21st would be our second meeting in September, so that would actually be close to somewhere, somewhere in there. If, if that's what you want to do.
You want to do second meeting in September? Okay.
It's our second, that's second.
All right. And all those in favor? Motion, Chris. Is there, that turns our last topic in our joint session?
All right, now, as we table that, when they come back, there will be no more appearances for, against, it'll just be, it'll just be Verizon giving us the information. Is that correct?
Responding to your comments, because you've already thrown that public hearing.
Okay, so we're, we'll be able to, we'll be able to question them.
Yes.
Without me, that I want.
Right. Randy, is there anything for a second?